We call this meeting to order, our regularly monthly scheduled Board of Education meeting here today on Tuesday, December 10, 2024. We will start with Mr. Dagenhart leading us through the Pledge of Allegiance. Paul Stan?
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Have all board members had the opportunity to review the agenda? Are there any comments, questions, addendums, adds, deletes?
Make a motion.
Second.
So we have a first by Mr. Dagenhart, a second by Mr. Reese. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is unanimous, we approve. So next we go on to honors and recognitions, Dr. Del Revis. And hopefully they're in order.
We're gonna do our best. All right.
And the blame falls on me.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. We have a lot of great recognitions tonight, so we're gonna jump right in. So our first, come on up, Dr. Griffin. Our first is an artist that we have seen her face before, and she has entered and won a very unique contest. It's Caroline Bowles, so Caroline, come on up. And Caroline won the North Carolina School Board Association Elementary School Students' Poster Contest. And the theme for this year's contest was "My Classroom Is A Time Machine." Students were asked to draw a picture of themselves in the future, achieving their dreams and making a positive impact on the world, thanks to their public education. So they had 300 entries for her age group. This is third through fifth graders statewide.
Awesome.
And she got first in the states. Caroline is a third grader at Bethlehem Elementary. Congratulations.
Congrats, Caroline.
Would Caroline's parents like to come join her for a picture, please?
Dr. Del Revis, I was honored to be at that conference, and they called your name and your artwork, and they put it in front of all the other persons at the conference. And I got to go onstage and receive this award that says, "North Carolina School Board Association First Place Award in Grades Through Five, Caroline Bowles, Alexander County Schools." Congratulations to you. And they gave you a gift, so you have a gift in here, and I'm gonna let you open to see what it is. You wanna open it? Think you know what they gave you? Say thank you. What is that? Wow. Oh, it's a whole art set.
Nice.
Wow. That is cool.
So that's from the North Carolina School Board Association, so congratulations.
Congrats.
Good job.
All right. Dr. Griffin, you get in there, please.
Yeah, I'll get in there.
And y'all speed over in the middle. And Mom, could you maybe hold up the art kit so we can also show that as well? I'm also loving that blue ribbon.
Yeah, it's nice.
Can we somehow get the blue ribbon on here? Okay, that'd be great. Love that. What? What? All right. I'm gonna count to three. Oh, I said it was gonna count to three. I'm really gonna count to three this time. One, two, three. I'm gonna do it again. One, two, three. Congratulations. Beautiful.
Awesome. Good job.
Stay away. You're okay. That's right. All right, everyone look in here. No, maybe we can have a point with the camera.
Yeah, come on up in there, because I gotta help you too.
I mean, let's get all the important people up here. And yes, I like that. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. Excellent.
Good job.
All right. So we want to continue our recognitions with a congratulatory nod to staff members who received a Public School Partnership mini-grant from Appalachian State University. The applicants were able to receive up to $1,000 in their application, and the projects are to be geared towards science, technology, engineering, and math. Appalachian gave out more than $22,000 in grants this year, and here are some of the people who were gifted for the Public School Partnership here locally, and they had goals of collaboration, sustainability, and innovation. So first, we have from Alexander Central High, Paige Jackson and Kate Tutterow. And would your principal join you? Come on up.
Maybe. I feel like you'd drag him up.
We'll just get a group shot at the end of everybody. All right. Next, we have from Hidney Elementary, Ms. Melissa Cantor. Melissa's the media coordinator for there and for Wittenburg. All right. From Wittenburg Elementary, we have a handful of people on this application, which include Melinda Glenn, Anna Buzinski, Zachary Richardson, and Dakota Brown. Congratulations. Next is from Central Office and Alexander Early College, Donita Del Revis, and Mary Brown. Next, we have from West Alexander Middle School, Ashley Huss. And lastly, how about Mr. Lalehold this one? I don't think Ms. Barnes could make it tonight, but from representing Alexander Central High School, East and West Alexander Middle School, Amber Barnes. Congratulations to all the recipients.
Wait, you need to be in the picture. You need to be in the picture. There you go. Somebody else can take the picture.
We might have to hit this school a little bit later. And then wait, wait, wait. A little bit closer. And then Mr. Griffin. Okay. Everybody look at this place. Looking happy, got money, free money. I don't like you got free money. There you go. Thank you.
Show me the money.
You know I'm in video, you're stupid, so that I know who you people are, right? Okay. Mr. Lalehold, you're the mom. Thank you all so much.
Great job. Great job.
All right. So we love all recognitions, but this is the highlight of the season. In fact, for me, this sort of marks the onset of the holidays, so we are here now to celebrate the Holiday Card Contest. Our Holiday Card Contest is open to all students, kindergarten, actually, pre-K through 12th grade. We had tons of entries this year. In particular, we were pleased with the number of third through fifth grade submissions and the number of high school entries. I believe we had the most in those two categories that I've seen. In the primary category, our winner from Hidney Elementary is a second grader. His name is Gael Galarza De Leon. Gael, would you come up with your family?
Hi, buddy.
And Gael has the artwork of the reindeer card that you see on your far left. Ms. Glenn, would you help by giving them those to hold for the picture, too?
Jessica's on the good run. Good job.
Awesome. Let me get one just with Gael. So those of y'all, step aside. You can squat better than I can, Jessica, so maybe you're hired. Okay. And in the bag on the far left, Ms. Glenn, thank you for helping. So Gael gets copies of his cards that are actually printed into actual cards that he can send with a little holiday message. And there's a little gift certificate in there for $25, so hopefully he can spend that where he wants, and some candy and stuff. I mean, it wouldn't be Christmas without candy, so congratulations, Gael. If he'll just stay on the front row.
If he'll stay there, yeah. For the paper, I'm gonna just give a group shot of the card.
Gael, will you stay on the front row, and I'll get a picture of you with everybody? Thank you, dear. All right? Yes, oh, yeah. All right. So next, we will move to our third through fifth grade category. And this is a familiar face for our Holiday Card Contest. We'd like to ask fifth grader Kayden Cox to come on up. Kayden is from Hidney Elementary. Kayden, you want your folks to come up with you? And I was just telling, we're gonna call him Trooper McLean now, since we got two McLanes. I was just telling Mr. McLean that we actually wondered if Kayden had traced his, because it was so fantastic. We did some little checks, and he had not. He had authentically drawn that himself, did all the work. We knew he was a good artist, but it was just almost too good to be true. So he's got a little Grinch look there for us, and he did good work.
Yes. I believe that's Lucy's card. Yep, yep. So you get some cards, too, Kayden.
So our next category is our middle school winners, and we would like to ask Ms. Bee Valcourt to come up. Bee is a sixth grader at West Alexander Middle School. Congratulations. Bee has the amazing little, I think the cat won everybody's heart in your picture, Bee. It was so cute. Bee, do you want your family to come up with you? Come on up. This is important, Mom. Come on. Come on forward. Come on. All right. Bee, will you wait for me on that front row there? Okay. Last but not least, for the high school group. This is a young lady I had a chance to meet at the Apple Festival back in the fall. She was using her talents at the booth that day and could just draw whatever you wanted her to draw in the face painting, right there on the spot. Pretty dang talented. Emerson Horns, a student in 12th grade at Alexander Early College, and we appreciate her enthusiasm for art and her entry, which really is too good to believe. Beautiful. Mom, you'll come up, right?
Great job.
Amazing.
While they're getting some pictures, so we invite county office people and our central office folks here are the people who vote. They vote all blind, so they don't know who submitted which piece, and each of the winners, we think, were very deserving. All right. So if you guys will all line up, Emerson, you can be on the end, and you guys just line up so we can get that group picture.
A group picture, lovely. Good job. You did great. You did great.
Yeah, great job.
Flip yours around here, though. You see it? And it's gonna be right in the middle.
I think you might need help with the straw for the guy. There you go. Awesome.
You stay this time, please.
That's all right.
You want me to do that while you're sitting up?
Let's get you up this way. Let's have everybody with their, um, their, uh... When you're winning prizes, okay?
Yeah, I'm showing my inability to get this in.
I'm trying to get that in there, but I'll let Rob handle that.
Good job, Rob.
Oh, Josh.
Good job, Chairman.
No pressure, but I missed one corner.
It's okay. It's better than I. All right. Everyone look in here. I know you've got a lot of smiles for us. All right. I'm gonna count to three. One, two, three. I'm gonna count again. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys. Wonderful.
So that concludes our honors and recognition. If any of our special guests would like to be dismissed, they may leave at this time, and we thank you for being here and for being part of us.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, all of you. Merry Christmas. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
UC High School fan. UC High School.
Caroline's at dang outlets. She got a wet take.
32.
We lost our office.
We did. Not one day. Everybody's watching.
Actually, just keep going. I said, I'm tied up.
Chief, please do.
I'm gonna tell you what. I'm loving between y'all here. It's so good.
Next time, we're gonna connect your camera to the monitors. All right, very well. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comments? No public comment at this point. So next will be the consent agenda. Have all board members had the opportunity to review the consent agenda? Are there any comments or questions? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
So Mr. McLean?
Second.
Second by Mr. Reese. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? No. The schedule is approved to be moved to the first, the second Monday of every month.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And we'll do that in January? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I just wanted to clarify that for our public to make sure that was the pleasure of the board, that we would acknowledge that within the...
Thank you very much. It was...
Thanks, Dr. Griffin. Thank you.
Very good to put it up and excellent to discuss here in an open forum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very well. So item C on reports, human resources. Dr. Klor?
Hello. Good evening. I have a little bit of a voice, so that's good. As you have the personnel agenda in front of you is presented, does anyone have any questions? Okay. So we presented that to you. What's the pleasure of the board?
So do we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda that's presented to us and reviewed?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Dagenhart's. Mr. Reese, second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? No. The HR agenda is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item D, superintendent's report. Dr. Griffin?
Great. Thank you, Chair Agüez. First item I have, I just wanted to bring attention to the fact that I was able to attend the North Carolina State School Board Association Annual Conference, November 17 through the 19th. I was joined by a board member, Dagenhart, and Argüez, Chairman Argüez. So the three of us did attend that conference to where we were able to network and have conversation with boards from across the state. Also, they had many different sessions for professional development that we're able to attend. I think many of those sessions were extremely beneficial to where we were able to have conversations about things that are going on within other LEAs and districts of ideas of things that possible implementation or just gather, again, those networking opportunities to talk with other board members and other superintendents from across the state. So I applaud them for attending that conference. I hope it's something that we can do with our rest of our board moving forward. We even had conversations. There were many presentations that were given and presented by the superintendent and the board themselves, and I just thought that was a great opportunity for us to possibly in the future to showcase some wonderful things that we're doing within our district and just a collaborative piece between board members and the superintendents, again, from not only their own LEA but across the state of North Carolina. So I commend you guys for attending. It's something that I would like to do in the future with, again, opportunity for all board members. I know our schedules are packed, but anytime we can get together and network and hear ideas from across the state, I'm certainly open to that. So thank you, guys, for attending that. I also like to bring the attention to the public on December 3rd. We had our first work session with our newly appointed board members. Jesse Bowles here, Corey McLean, Shannon Oxentine, our new board members, joined us for that work session to where we gained just knowledge about the district and things that we do together and ways that we can grow and hopefully hit on pertinent information as a board and also as a district for us to grow within our school system. So thank you, guys, for being part of that. I think they're valuable opportunities for us to have conversation and just learn about our district. So thank you for being a part of those and engaged in those conversations. Next, just like to bring attention to East and West middle schools are playing this evening in basketball and also wrestling. I think wrestling's at West and basketball is here at ACHS. That event also took place on November 21st, where they were all at Alexander Central High School. I was able to attend those games with many board members and a lot of people from our community. So we're very, very fortunate to have the ability to bring those two middle schools together and really celebrate our student athletes in one location. Both events were absolutely packed from community members and seeing Mr. Lale out in the audience here. Thank you for hosting that and having that, but what an awesome time to bring those schools together and in competition, in friendly competition. I know both want to win, but they certainly compete out there, and it's just a wonderful event, and I'm glad that we were able to do that. And then finally, the last two things. I'd just like to wish all of our staff members and our students a certainly a very Merry Christmas and a happy holidays that are getting ready to begin here in a couple of days. I hope our staff members take just a little bit of time to rejuvenate, relax, enjoy your family, enjoy your loved ones.
Sure.
Enjoy your time away from the job that you have here, that we're grateful for everything that you do. And then finally, I've got a little bit of DM news here. I learned today that one of our former board members, Sally Hardis, passed away, and I spoke with her family earlier today, and I asked if it would be okay for me to recognize that tonight at the board meeting. I wanted to do that in just recognition of the things that she has done for this community. I was actually part of the staff during her tutelage when she was a board member here the last time I was a part of the system, and she was just so kind and invited to me and gave me a lot of guidance, and I'm grateful for her and the services she's given this community. So if you guys would, please, if we could have just a moment of silence just to think about her and her family, keep them in our thoughts and prayers, please.
Increase the allotments in two programs. CTE credentials and literacy interventions.
Correct.
The amendment also adds allotments for three programs. Behavioral support, hygiene grant program, and hurricane relief and recovery. With this amount, the state public school fund increases to thirty-seven million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. And the total budget increases to sixty-four million, two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-four dollars. One of the ways that I gauge where we are in the budget is the percent of the budget that has been, that has been spent compared to the time, the amount of time that has passed in the year. So at the end of November, forty-two percent of the fiscal year was complete. And the to- for the total budget, thirty-nine percent was spent. That means, oh, in the capital outlay budget, if you exclude the capital outlay budget, and if you look at the cap- the outlay budget, we have spent a significant amount. Capital outlay is dr- the spending in capital outlay is driven by the projects we do. And when you have a very expensive project, like the Sugarloaf project, then you're going to expend more of your budget. So if you, if you reduce that, and take out the capital outlay, we're really at about thirty-five percent of the budget spent. That means that budget, that spending is slightly below the budget. Another thing that we have been waiting for, for some time, is what DPI calls the best one of two. The best ADM for the first or second school month. And that is now the indicator of the ADM that we will get for next year's funding. And they tell us that we should have that by the end of the week. So that's a, that's a milestone.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Great news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done to you and Nadine. Appreciate your work.
Chair, Chairman Argüés, could, could we make it, revert back to our consent agenda? We had an item on there I'd like to discuss in public, and that was subject A. In the regular monthly meeting with Alexander County Board of Education, I'd like to discuss the possibility of moving our, our regular meeting from Tuesday to that of Monday evening. I think that had been some conversation and see what the pleasure of the board is for that, so the public's aware of that.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, Dr. Griffin. So we open the floor to conversation, conference questions on moving the board meet, the scheduled board meetings from the second Tuesday of every month to the second Monday
Yes, sir.
of every month.
There were several conflicts that were right, that were happening on Tuesday evenings that we were running into. And I was just wondering if that would be the pleasure of the board to, to do that.
Very well. So the floor is open, any comments or questions? None? So do we have a motion to proceed and approve moving the regular scheduled meeting to the second Monday of every month from the currently scheduled second Tuesday of every month?
I'm making a motion.
So we have Mr. Oxentine?
Second.
Second, Mr. McLean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The schedule is approved to be moved to the first, the second Monday of every month.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And, and we'll do that in January, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I just wanted to clarify that for our public to make sure that that was the pleasure of the board, that we would acknowledge that within.
Thank you very much. It was.
Thanks, Dr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Very good to put up and excellent to discuss here in open forum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very well. So item C on reports, human resources, Dr. Klor.
Hello, good evening. I have a little bit of a voice, so that's good. As you have the personnel agenda in front of you is presented. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. So we've presented that to you. What's the pleasure of the board?
So do we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda that's presented to us and reviewed?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Dagenharts. Mr. Reese, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The HR agenda is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item D, superintendent's report, Dr. Griffin.
Great, thank you, Chair Argüés. First item I have, I just wanted to bring attention to the fact that I was able to attend the North Carolina State School Board Association Annual Conference, November seventeenth through the nineteenth. I was joined by a board member, Dagenhart and Argüés, Chairman Argüés. So the three of us did attend that conference to where we were able to, to network and have conversation with boards from across the state. Also, they had many different sessions for professional development that we're able to attend. And I think many of those sessions were extremely beneficial to where we were able to have conversations about things that are going on within other LEAs and districts of ideas of things that, that possible implementation or just gather, again, those networking opportunities to talk with other board members and other superintendents from across the state. So I applaud them for attending that conference. I hope it's something that we can do with, with our, rest of our board moving forward. We even had conversations. There were, there were many presentations that were given and presented by the superintendent and the board themselves. And I just thought that was a, a great opportunity for us to possibly in the future to showcase some wonderful things that we're doing within our district and just a collaborative piece between board members and the superintendents, again, from not only their own LEA but across the state of North Carolina. So I commend you guys for, for attending. It's something that I would like to, to do in the future with, again, opportunity for all board members. I know our schedules are packed, but anytime we can get together and, and network and hear ideas from across the state, I'm certainly open to that. So thank you guys for, for attending that. I also like to bring the attention to the public. On December third, we had our first work session with our newly appointed board members. Jesse Bowles here, Corey McLean, Shannon Oxentine, our new board members, joined us for that work session to where we gained just knowledge about the district and things that we do together and ways that we can grow and hopefully hit on pertinent information as a board and also as a district for us to grow within our school system. So thank you guys for, for being part of that. I think they're valuable opportunities for us to have conversation and just, just learn about our district. So thank you for, for being a part of those and engaged in those conversations. Next, just like to bring attention to East and West Middle Schools are playing this evening in basketball and also wrestling. I think wrestling's at West and basketball is here at ACHS. That event also took place on November twenty-first, where they were all at Alexander Central High School. I was able to attend those games with, with many board members and a lot of people from our community. So we're very, very fortunate to have the ability to, to bring those two middle schools together and really celebrate our student athletes in one location. Both events were absolutely packed from community members and, and see Mr. Lale out in the audience here. Thank you for hosting that and having that. But what an awesome time to, to bring those schools together. And in competition, in friendly competition, I know both want to win, but they, they certainly compete out there and it's just a wonderful event. I'm glad that we were able to do that. And then finally, the last two things. I'd just like to wish all of our staff members and our students a certainly a very Merry Christmas and a happy holidays that are getting ready to begin here in a couple of days. I hope our staff members take just a little bit of time to rejuvenate, relax, enjoy your family, enjoy your loved ones.
Sure.
Enjoy your time away from, from the, the job that you have here, that we're grateful for everything that you do. And then finally, I've got a little bit of dem news here. I learned today that one of our former board members, Sally Hardis, passed away. And I spoke with her family earlier today and I asked if it would be okay for me to recognize that tonight at the board meeting. I wanted to do that in just recognition of, of the things that she has done for, for this community. I was actually part of the staff during her tutelage when she was a board member here. The last time I was a part of the system and she was just so kind and invited to me and gave me a lot of guidance. And I'm grateful for, for her and the service that she's given this community. So if you guys would please, if we could have just a moment of silence just to think about her and her, her family, keep them in our thoughts and prayers, please. Great, thank you, thank you very much. And again, we're, we're grateful for, for the lives that she's touched in, in her service to this community. And then finally, I just have some dates for upcoming events. December twentieth marks the end of the nine weeks. And we also have on December twentieth, the early release day that's on our calendar. December twenty-third through January first, there'll be no school for, for students and staff at our, at our regular schools. The, the early college I mentioned, just second, January second through the, the third, optional teacher workdays and no school for students. And finally, on January sixth, those students at the regular schools and staff will return back to school. On January ninth, the students will return back to Alexander Early College. And they're just on just a little bit of a different schedule being that they work with CBCC. So we want to make sure that we look at the differences between those two schedules. But again, thank you so much for, for all that our staff and Doug, our students, give me an opportunity to speak about that today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Griffin. So on unfinished business, Ms. Sharon Mahaffey is going to share with us Board of Education Policy Revision, second reading.
Okay, tonight we have policy number thirteen-ten, parental involvement up for second reading. This stood for the month and there were no recommendations or suggestions, and so I would ask for approval on second reading.
Do we have any comments or questions from the board on the policy? Do we have a motion to approve the policy?
Motion to approve.
Mr. McLean, who makes the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dagenhart. All in favor of approving the policy? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Policy approved, thank you. So now we have first reading policy revision, Ms. Sharon Mahaffey.
We have three policies up for first reading tonight. Evaluation of Students, policy thirty-four-hundred. Bullying and harassing behavior prohibited. Policy forty-three-twenty-nine. And use of unmanned aircraft, policy forty-three-thirty-four. So we'll let these stand for the month and be back next month.
Thank you, Sharon.
Excellent, thank you very much. Dr. DalRevis, our calendar.
Okay, crash course in calendar making.
You gave us a question.
You guys may know far more, especially the new folks, than what I may think you know, but I'm just gonna start from the beginning. So good evening again. I just want to tell you a little bit about the calendar. We have some new board members and wanted to just kind of make sure everybody knows the process and what we're kind of looking at tonight. People get really excited about the calendar and the reality is there's not a ton of state flexibility when we start looking at how to make the, the academic calendar for the school year. So we're looking ahead to twenty-five, twenty-six. And we started the process, Dr. Griffin and I met. We looked at some calendars from surrounding districts and you kind of weighed the pros and cons of those and looked at those. And so based on what some of the other counties do and what we were looking at and just his input and so on, I made three drafts that I took to the committee. The committee met on November twenty-first. I think we had some conflicting event here, so we wound up moving it to the high school. It was a very nasty rainy day. Christopher McLean joined us and then had to get pulled away straight away. So he was not able to be there to help us with the input. So at that committee meeting, we had those three drafts in front of us. Mr. Lale shared with us that his teachers would feel better about having the state exams after the holiday break. And you may or may not be aware, but like right now, the calendar we're operating on, there are seventy-seven days in the first semester and the second semester has ninety-two and a half days. So that's nearly sixteen days longer and you are required by law to try to balance the semesters as best you can. And so he said that his folks were interested in having the exams after we came back from the holiday break. Well, so the committee at that point automatically threw out that one draft because that's affecting his school only and his folks had expressed an interest in testing after Christmas break. So then we had the two drafts and we took some input on those. And so I brought the input that folks had given me their back and talked it over with Dr. Griffin a little bit more. And so I made the revisions that were possible. One revision that Mr. Lale had expressed on behalf of his folks, for instance, is that the folks would have like a full week to review when we come back for Christmas. Well, the problem with that is you wind up offsetting the semesters the other way if you do that, because if you have five whole days after you come back from Christmas for review and then five whole days for testing, you wind up having those semesters out of whack again, which was the problem we were trying to avoid.
Right.
So I made a couple versions or revised what we had so that one of them has the exams there. If you're looking at draft one, it has the exams there starting on that Thursday after we would come back. So the students would have days for review, students and teachers. And I believe the other one, they would start testing on that Friday. So a little more review on that one, that version. Couple of things I'd like you to note on the two versions. So draft one, the last student day would be May twenty-second. And some folks are interested in being out for Memorial Day weekend and actually nine out of the ten schools, once Dr. Griffin and I had looked at some of the feedback from the committee, I sent it out to the schools for their input. So nine out of the ten schools supported what is the shorter calendar. So you know, what that means is the student's last day would be there the twenty-second. And so in theory, that would be graduation that night. So that's something that you guys are going to need to try to get input from your communities on because some, you know, some families graduating Memorial Day weekend may great, be, be great and maybe better. You know, for instance, if they have folks traveling from out of town, some folks may not care for that. So that's something just to consider and weigh. And then if you look at draft two, the last student day would be May twenty-ninth, that Friday. And so that would mean graduation would be there. You know, it, it, one thing that's kind of locked us in this particular year, well, twenty-twenty-six actually, is that Memorial Day comes actually very early, staggered in the month, you know, so that kind of boxes you in yet again. So the plus with, again, with draft one is that school would be over for students by Memorial Day. The downside of draft one is that there is very little, what you might call like bank time. And I believe my calculations have there'd only be six and a half hours, which is just barely over a day's worth of bank time. An instance where we might need bank time is like, for instance, the delay that we had last week when we came in two hours late. You need a little time to help you with that because those are not things the state will waive. You know, when we had the weather at the end of September, early October, that because in part Alexander was considered a disaster area, those days were waived. So there's no requirement, you have to get a thousand twenty-five hours. There's no requirement that you have to make up that waive time because that was such an extreme circumstance. But certainly, if you chip into, you know, your thousand twenty-five hours and you have a little bit of time bank and you start chipping into it with this delay and that delay and so on, eventually, you know, starts kind of adding up. Some of the folks in the committee, and which was made of parents and administrators, teachers, a couple of central office folks who kind of helped keep me straight with payroll and making sure we've got enough paydays in there for the teachers and so on. Some of the committee members felt like, let's go with draft one, roll the dice. If we need the time, then, you know, we just make adjustments that semester, you know, May twenty, or semester of twenty-twenty-six, starting in January. Some committee members felt like, ooh, it's a little too risky if we're only banking six and a half hours for, you know, given just kind of what we saw last week. So, so those are the things for you to consider. We are asking you to just get input from your communities and we would expect to have public comment open at next meeting in January on this. And then we would hope you would vote at the January meeting. So are there questions I can try to handle tonight?
That banking time, does that, you're talking about if we had like a bunch of snow days, we would cut into that, is what you're saying?
Right. So like, for instance, last week, you know, that weather came up pretty quickly. There were no plans to try to make that a remote day, so that was just a day closed. And Dr. Griffin, you might want to throw in wherever. So, so that's time that's not made up. So our average day is, or our days count as six and a quarter hours. So that's six and a quarter hours that we have no accounting for last Tuesday. And then we had the two-hour delay on Wednesday. So we're behind eight and a quarter hours right now. We're okay because we have enough days built into this year's calendar. You know, and it, people get kind of hung up on, do you have to have days? You have to have hours. Technically, you have to have both, but you can go with the hours, which actually winds up being fewer days than if you went by days. So.
So we have to get that thousand and twenty-five hours in.
Right.
And, and we have to meet that criteria. So with, with little flexibility within these calendars, if, if we have some extreme weather, then, then we would have to, to find a way within that calendar to, to make up those days. And with six and a half hours, that is a minimal amount to, to bank on. So, and there's not a lot of optional workday within this calendar to work on to make those times up either. So, you know, that, that's, that's some of the drawback. I, I think the biggest piece here that, that we need to be in tune to is we as superintendents have, have been fighting for years with the General Assembly on calendar flexibility. There's still no, no movement with that and, and there's really not a lot of ability for us to manipulate the calendar as it is. Those dates are extremely confining. If you see both these calendars, you see days stacked on, on the front end for, for employees and stacked on the, on the end. And that's because of those, those rigid start dates and end dates. And we have to get two-hundred-and-fifteen days in for employees. So I, I wish there was just more calendar flexibility. I wish that we could begin earlier in, in August and match that of our early college and, and other courses. And we have student athletes that are beginning August first that are already coming to school every day. It's just, there's so much to talk about, but those are what is because we don't have that ability. So for what we do have, Dr. DalRevis and committee have put together a couple of plans here. What I'd like to do is just get feedback and input and then hopefully come to some type of resolve in January or so. Because ultimately, what I, what I want to be able to do is no matter what our calendar says, I want to be able to give our community members and parents the ability to schedule their, their upcoming plans around what that calendar looks like. So tonight is, is just for conversation. We're not looking for any action, but it certainly starts that conversation and for our ability to try to figure out what we can do from this point forward.
I have a question, if, if I may.
Sure.
So is there any statistics or anything? I mean, the, the only thing, and I'm, and I'm new and I wasn't in on the committee, so exams after Christmas versus before. I mean, I know, I know what I feel like after a two-week vacation and how long it takes me to get started back. So, you know, I'll, I personally like exams going before Christmas versus after. And so I'm just trying to figure out if there's any kind of, any, any, any kind of measurables that we can take away from taking exams after the Christmas break versus taking exams before the Christmas break.
Well.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, um, thank, thanks for that. So there, the research says that the school calendar does not really affect test scores that much. But given what we have this year, where we have such an offset in the semesters, where like we're talking a difference of sixteen days. So the first semester is sixteen days shorter than the second semester. Yeah, I said that right. Certainly sixteen teaching and learning days are going to affect scores. But like overall, generally, you know, if you start this day versus that day or if you have exams then versus another time, whatever, generally, the calendar does not affect test scores, general. It's just when you're playing with sixteen days or a difference of sixteen days and then, you know, remember we had an early dismissal. We lost three days during the hurricane. Now we've got, we had another early dismissal and we were out because of the weather last Tuesday. So, you know, that's really cut into the instructional time that those high school teachers, and it's not just EOC courses, you know, it's CTE courses too, who have to take state exams at the end of the semester. So it, it, you know, it's, it's tough to overcome that challenge.
And yes, and I can definitely see that, that, you know, you may be hurting the kids more by trying to cram in a semester, a, a whole semester sixteen days less than, than semester number two. So I can see that that, I can see where that may be the problem as well. So I can see it both ways. So I was just asking a question.
I certainly think there, there are drawbacks either way. I, I, I think we have to listen to, and, and this affects our high school, our middle schools year-round schedule and elementary, that and the same, although they have nine weeks really of the semester break with the high schools, that they're starting anew. You know, we hopefully listen to them. I, I would, I would say that if, if Mr. Lale was to chime in here and we won't get there, that there, there are people within his staff that, that have different opinions. So you, you kind of go with, with, with what we feel is, is the largest opinion and, and adapt to the both. In high school years, I've done both. I've, I've been a part of, of testing after Christmas and testing before. As far as scores, I, I never really saw any extreme differences. You're, you're right, I, I think that people would, I think students would, would like for that semester break to end at Christmas, to start anew when they come back. However, again, the, the, the ability for us not to have calendar flexibility, and, and again, we, we want to do what's right by our students, but our inability to have that flexibility has caused us to create these decisions.
Yep.
And I don't think is, is what's in best interest of, of our students and our faculty. But, so, so we need to weigh and, 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 you know, revert to that, get some input, get some time to reflect on that. And if, if we get a lot of feedback coming back to us on, on that piece, then, then we'll try to figure out what that looks like. Thank you for bringing that up.
What question would be, it's more of a open-ended question, but as feedback starts to flow back in, do we have a vehicle in our school website where we could post the frequently asked questions so that we can broadcast those so that I'm sure many, once they start becoming facts, many folks within our community are going to be paying the same kind of questions, right? And so we'll be able to communicate out.
So I think that, we, we mean feedback would come to you guys. Certainly, if y'all want to say like, here's what people are asking me, I'm, I'm happy to put something together. But I'm not going to know the feedback because people are going to speak to y'all.
But as we receive it, we'll communicate out.
Sure, I'd love it.
And that way, make it a.
I mean, almost kind of like an informational piece so that maybe everybody, if they have the same question, we can get the answer out there. Yeah.
And another second question is from a legal compliance, statutory compliance.
Yes, of course, yep.
Whoop, I'm sorry.
Yes, they're good to go. I would not make an illegal calendar, Mr. McLean.
And, and just to clarify, draft one, we start August twenty-fifth? That's the first day?
Yeah, August twenty-fifth is the first day period because that's the first day we can start.
The last day is May twenty-second?
Or twenty-ninth, yep.
And then if we, if it's May twenty-second, will we graduate May twenty-second or we graduate May twenty-ninth?
Typically, we would graduate that Friday night.
Because those are the questions we're going to be asked.
Yes.
Like, when are we starting?
Typically, we would graduate that last Friday of school. It, it's going to put his folks in a little bit of a pinch to get testing wrapped up and graduation practice and.
And then when is Memorial Day in this May twenty-sixth calendar? What day is Memorial Day?
It's, you see the 25th, the little red one? All the reds are holidays that we have to take.
Perfect, alright.
You may have said this, but does version two have the same amount of bank hours as version one?
No, but version two has about, three, it has about, well, I put the numbers out there, it has about 22 hours and a quarter, so it has about three and a half days of bank time versus the first version, which has basically one day.
Do we historically always try to target a certain amount of hours of bank days?
We have in the past. There's some kind of interesting stuff that is relatively new through the state and we can have remote days. So we have remote days, that time does not count against us.
Okay.
But we can only do five remote days. And some of these things that you guys are asking, and I'm not saying don't ask, but some of these are covered in that document that is attached to your agenda that's called Calendar Must. So we can only do five remote days, though, and after that, we're out of remote days. So then we have to determine, or Dr. Griffin would say, like, we're going to close school or, or we're going to go. You know, we'd have to weigh those things out.
But just to echo, having said on a couple of calendar committees and just to echo what Dr. Griffin talked about, you know, it's just, the state puts so many restrictions on us as far as times we can, if they would come off that a little bit, it would help us a lot as far as equaling out and being able to do exams before Christmas and, and things like that. So it's, those restrictions hurt big time.
I will continue to try to advocate at the state level for calendar flexibility. That, that's something that, again, I know many superintendent support. You guys probably have heard that there are even school boards that have, what they call gone rogue and, and actually started before that said start date. And, and that's, that's a very slippery slope, because it is defined by law. And those are conversations that, of course, we can have at a later date. But just to continue to review these, we'll, we'll accept feedback and then come back to the table to make some final decisions. I, I do ask that we just don't push this down the, down the road too long, because whatever we do decide, I want to give families the ability to, to adapt to and make sure they can make their plans.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Can I just add one thing, Dr. Griffin, because I nerd out on policy and law and so on? So this year, 25% of districts in the state chose to start sooner than what the state law said that they could start.
Has there been any consequences as a result of that?
Not yet.
Not aware of.
Strength in numbers.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Email me.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So Dr. Griffin, next on the agenda is the sale of the Ellendale property?
Yes. Thank you very much, Chair Argüés. Just for, for information, for our, our ITC of new businesses, selling the property, that property is the, the old Ellendale facility. It's old Ellendale School, consisting of 6.889 acres and is right off of Highway 6490. That property was, was sent to the county commissioners for an offer. If they had interest in it, they did not. At that time, we did put it out for upset bid. We had received interest from Crosspoint Church to where we put together a purchasing contract of what they were willing to offer us. You guys have a copy of that contract in front of you. That property did go out for 10-day upset bid. We did, we did not receive any counter offers, so the offer that we received from them still stands for what we have the ability to move forward with or not. So our decision would be at this point, whether to accept that purchase offer that's contracted, that stands before you, or deny that. I'd like to, for the general public, to just recognize a little bit of, of that, that offer. That was listed at purchase price of $905,000 and shall be paid within 24 hours of the date of the contract as follows. $45,250 of that was earnest money, that's a minimum of 5% of the purchase price. Also of that $905,000, it was agreed on a credit of $280,000 for improvements that the church had made over the years, for a total payment of $579,750. When you add that and the $45,250, you come up to $625,000 for cash purchase price to us. So, so that was the offer that was up there. Now it becomes the, the pleasure of the board to either provide a motion to accept or reject that offer.
Any questions from the board? Do we have a motion to proceed with the sale of the old Ellendale School property?
Make a motion to accept the offer.
I second it.
Second by Mr. Dagenhart. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? The board approves the sale of the old Ellendale School. Please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Make one comment there. I'd just like to mention to Mr. Bowman, former board member, his hard work, he worked so hard with that.
Thank you, Scott.
And I think it's kudos to him and a big pat on the back to him, it would be well, well deserved.
Excellent point. Excellent point. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. I hope you're listening.
We're not here for public comment like you threatened, so.
Well, we might sign up, sign them up for next month. Well, next on the agenda is the election of the board chairman. Dr. Griffin, if you would like to proceed with the election process.
Sure. For the, for the general public, we will be at this point electing our, our chairperson for the school board for the upcoming year, and then our chairman, elected chairperson will at that point ask for, for nominations or...
Our newly appointed chairman.
New appointment chairman for the vice chair. That's correct. Thank you for that, for that point. So at this point, I'm asking for your, your request for your new board chair for the upcoming year before you. You have in front of you, you guys have a ballot with everyone's name. At the bottom of that ballot is your signed signature as a active board member. Then I'd ask that you circle the person that you would like to be your board chair for the upcoming school board year, and then we will going to report out what you, who you vote for. So for public record, and to make sure we capture that within the minutes, after you turn in your names to me, if you just pass those down, once you have one circled to me, then I'm going to ask you to report out the person that you have voted for, for public record.
Chair. For chair.
For chairperson. This is chair. 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 I'm going to start down at the very end. Board member McLean, Corey McLean, who would you like for your chair, please?
I'd like to nominate Matthew Reese for chair.
Great, thank you. Board member Josh Dagenhart?
Mr. Reese.
Okay. Board member Shannon Oxentine?
Mr. Reese.
Okay. Board member Matthew Reese?
Myself.
Okay. Board member Rob Argüés?
Mr. Reese.
Board member Jesse Bowles?
Matthew Reese.
And finally, board member Anthony McLean?
Matthew Reese.
Right. I'm not very good at math, but that does sound right. Our, our new board chair is going to be Matthew Reese. Congratulations to you, Rob Argüés.
Congratulations, man.
And Mr. Chair, if you would do the same thing for our vice chair, please.
Okay, board members, before you, you have a ballot for vice chairman nominations. If you would, please circle your choice and pass down to me. And as our esteemed superintendent did, starting down at the end, Corey McLean, who is your choice for vice chairman?
Josh Dagenhart.
Josh Dagenhart, who is your choice?
I'll vote for myself.
Board member Shannon Oxentine?
Josh Dagenhart.
Board member Argüés?
Mr. Dagenhart.
And myself, I voted for Josh Dagenhart. Board member Jesse Bowles?
Joshua Dagenhart.
And board member Anthony McLean?
Josh Dagenhart.
As previously stated, I believe it is unanimous. Vice chair, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, board members, may I have a motion that we...
Chairman Reese, before we go into closed session, may I state something?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say for the, for the public, for our, for Robert Argüés, who's, who's represented us as chair over the past year, we appreciate your leadership and your guidance.
Yes.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Now Chairman Reese, if you would.
All right. Board members, would I have the pleasure of having a motion that we adjourn open session and enter into closed session?
I'd like to make the motion.
Second.
First chance I've gotten in a year to do that one.
We have a motion by board member Argüés, a second by board member Anthony McLean. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board unanimously approves. We enter now into closed session.
And Chairman Reese, we, we will have action, so we will be, we will be returning here in just a bit, okay?
So members of the community, we will be returning. Thank you.